Judge, we're ready.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning. It's nine o'clock October the twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, and our regular commissary court meeting is now in session. First item on the agenda, a roll call by our county clerk, Mary Jane Aviala Noah. Mary Jane, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioner. Judge Rethel.
Present.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Present.
Commissioner Lisondo.
Present.
Commissioner Solis.
Present.
And Commissioner Garza. We have a call, Judge.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Will everyone please rise to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, community patients. I see our fire chief in the audience. Morning, Danny.
Morning, Judge.
I think our overall numbers are looking better for the pandemic.
Oh, yeah, definitely. The, the, I mean, as far as testing and then the positivity.
Yes.
They've gone down significantly.
That's, that's all good news.
Yes. Really quick, on October the twenty second, I mean, October the twentieth, the USDA, FDA, I'm sorry, amended the emergency use of, of, of operation for both Moderna and Johnson and Johnson. They already approved the booster doses for Moderna and Johnson.
Correct.
Because we had no booster approved for Moderna, which is the one, as far as us county, our primary.
Majority of us, yes.
So, we, what was approved was the additional third dose. But as of Friday, they already approved the booster dose for Moderna. So, we did see an increase in foot traffic on Friday at, at our station because we're doing vaccines at our station. But I spoke to Ms. Datsam, and we're going to be doing vaccines and testing at community center for the time being, starting this week. And the facility is more appropriate and more spacious, like I mentioned, because on Friday, since it got approved, we haven't posted anything, but the people found out on their own, and we started getting a lot of foot traffic on Friday.
Who qualifies for the, for the booster?
So, I was going to get to that. The booster, for the booster, for the, for the Moderna, which is the one we're putting, anybody over the age of eighteen, as long as it's six months after their second dose.
Okay.
Now, we're still doing the additional third Moderna dose, and that's twenty-eight days after their second dose, but that's only for the severely immunocompromised, uh, A group.
Okay.
Which is people with HIV/AIDS or people who are currently going through cancer treatment, not past cancer, but currently going through cancer and going through the treatments of radiation and chemotherapy or any other immune, autoimmune disorder that suppresses their immune system. Those are the ones who qualify for the additional third dose, and that's twenty-eight days after their second dose. Like I mentioned again, the additional booster dose for the Moderna is six months, and anybody over the age of eighteen is eligible to get it. And that one does change as far as the third additional dose and the booster. It's the same medication, the only thing is the dosage, half the dosage.
For the booster.
For the booster, yes, sir.
How about the Pfizer?
The Pfizer also, it's two months after their first initial dose, they're eligible to get the, 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 did you say Pfizer or Johnson?
Pfizer.
Oh, Pfizer, I'm sorry. Now, the Pfizer is also six months. They're also doing the booster. It, it's the same for the, for the Pfizer. Booster's twenty-eight days after their sec-, I mean, uh, third additional dose is twenty-eight days after their second dose, and the booster is six months. And as far as the, the Johnson, it's two months after their initial dose, they're eligible to get their additional booster shot. And they also approved the mix and match, and they're strongly encouraging people to do that, but that's up to the person whoever got their shot.
So, we have Moderna, we can get a Pfizer, and vice versa.
Yes, if you have the Moderna, you can get the Pfizer booster shot, or if you have the Pfizer, you can get the Moderna booster shot. They're, they're encouraging people to do that, but that's up to each and every one of you, if that's what you want to do, or if you want to follow your series as far as what you got initially, initially, the first two doses.
That's, that's interesting, because at the beginning, they would require you to get the same.
Right.
It's a little bit confusing. We will post all this information on our page. We will post, we will have this information available to where the people go and get their vaccine, so, so we can clearly explain to them, because it's, it's, I, I can give you all the copies, and it's a, I have a lot of, uh.
A lot of them.
This is one of them. It starts off, where are you vaccinated? Yes, no, and it goes all over the place. So, but it's really not that hard. Like I mentioned, we will have this information posted in our page, and we will have this information readily available for the people who go and get their vaccines with us. So, with that, with those changes, like I mentioned, we will start doing vaccines at the, at the community center as far as, I mean, testing and vaccines, and the things will also change.
Danny, are you going to require them to register, like, what we were doing the vaccines before?
No.
Just first come, first served?
Yes, first come, first served, because we, we won't, we, we're not anticipating to have, like, vaccine drives of three, four hundred, eight hundred, like we did at the beginning, because as, as far as the six months. So, we will have waves of groups, because they still have to follow the six months after their second dose. So, we, we should start that having waves of groups, you know, at, at a slow, slow pace, but we will take it, we'll pay by year, and if that, well, that's the case, then we'll figure it out from there. But as of now, I think we will manage with a first come, first served basis.
And vaccine availability?
We're good. Vaccine availability, we're, we're good. We have over two hundred currently. We already placed an order this morning anticipating more people coming in. Uh, vaccine availability as far as Pfizer, we still have the, the National Guard coming in once a week. We still have, um, CBS administering Pfizer every day, Monday through Sunday.
Pfizer's every Wednesday?
With the National Guard? Every Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, from twelve to seven. Uh, we're also, we're, we're waiting on, we're keeping track with the approval of the eleven, I mean, the, the smaller age group for the Pfizer and hopefully the Moderna as well, so we can coordinate something with the, with the National Guard and the school and get that age, age range. Supposedly, they, they, they are expecting by the end of this month or early next month, but.
Have they already approved for five and?
No.
They have not yet?
That's what we're waiting on. Uh, so we can coordinate something with the school district, because that's, are going to be our target, our, the kids from school. So, they'll do something there at their school, or, but we'll, we'll coordinate something with them, but we're keeping track on it on a daily, on a weekly basis with, uh.
So, you're expecting sometime this month for them to probably put out something regarding?
Yes, that's what he told us. Either by the end of this month, it should be this week, or hopefully the beginning of next month.
I know that someone told me they had gotten a message from the school district regarding that.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're already anticipating very, very soon.
I know that in San Inasio, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, ma'am.
Then San Inasio, they're doing vaccines also that they're starting every Tuesday.
Yes, they, yes, mhm. And I believe they off, offer both Johnson, I mean, uh, Moderna and Pfizer.
And the Johnson and Johnson.
And the Johnson as well, okay.
And, uh, different vaccines.
Yes. So, so as far as I, I, as far as vaccine availability, that will change as far as for the party department, we will do, we, we will be doing vaccines Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The time will remain the same from nine to three, and it's going to be at the community center. We will be offering first, second, third, and booster, booster doses. Our testing will be at the, those same days. We will no longer be testing Tuesdays and Thursdays. We'll be doing the vaccines and testing the same days.
The same day, not, not, the party department and the.
No, no, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we'll be testing and vaccines at the community center. That's as far as us. Uh, National Guard will continue the same throughout the month of November and, I believe, December, uh, only Tuesdays from twelve to seven, and they offer all three, Moderna, Johnson, and Pfizer. The SHS office also offers Moderna and Pfizer Mondays, Monday to Fridays, from nine AM to three PM. First, second, third, and booster doses available, and like the commissioner mentioned, on Tuesdays and San Inasio. Daniel Pharmacy offers only the Moderna Wednesdays and Thursdays, Friday, I mean, Wednesday, Thursdays and Fridays, from ten to five PM. First, second, third, and booster doses available. As far as COVID testing, I already mentioned, the party department will be doing it Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at the community center, nine to three, and Gateway and Daniels, you have to call for availability. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
I'm glad we've got the community partners helping us out with the vaccination and.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think, yeah, I think your numbers should not be as, as large as they were initially when we were.
No, they, they shouldn't. Uh, even though the county does not offer the Pfizer, there is plenty of Pfizer availability in the county, within the county, with the, the other partnerships.
That's right.
But, uh, as far as that, as far as the, the, the Pfizer, I'm sorry, but that's all I have for you all today.
Uh, Chief, quick question. Other than your department oils offers testing here, um, for COVID, COVID testing?
Daniels Pharmacy, uh.
Is that an everyday thing, or?
That, you have to call for avail, availability. It changes on a week-to-week basis, because sometimes they run out of tests, but they, basically, I reached out, I always reach out to them on a weekly basis, they tell me to just have the people call. They have their sign posted all week outside, but they don't have testing every day. So, it's Daniel, us, Daniels Pharmacy, Gateway, uh, the PPA clinic on, uh, Seventeenth, they offer it too. You, but you need to call for availability, and some do require an appointment. I think they require an appointment, but I'm not sure. But as far as I know, there's, there's four entities that are, uh, providing testing for the county.
I think the clinic and the.
Yes, no, no, I'm sorry, and the, the county clinic as well.
Okay. And that's also on an appointment basis?
I think that one, uh, I think it's an appointment basis, and I think you need to be exhibiting, and Mary as well, but they don't do it as a walk-in like we do. If you are exhibiting symptoms, they'll test you, but if you're, if you're not, you just want, for peace of mind, they'll refer you to, to the party department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see the sheriff in the other sheriff. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Sheriff. Members of the county court. Uh, I just want to advise that I met with the governor this weekend, again, in reference to preparation for securing our lake and, and our border here in the county, and that there'll be resources coming in as of today. Uh, the Texas Department of Military, Texas Military Department, DPS, and other state and federal agencies will be, will be here today. We'll be setting up, uh, intervention of any type of surge that might be coming through the low-lying areas, and, uh, we'll be in contact with, uh, a few of the landowners here that have adjacent properties to the lake. That's, uh, we've, we've seen a lot more activity the last few weeks than over the last few months. Yes. And I, I guess you, they've been in contact with you about needing some, maybe some county, uh, I guess, spaces for them to, to, you know, store some of their equipment and? The, the thing is, there, there's, they're going to be here for, for a while, so they need to store some of their heavy equipment, and we're, we're going to be reaching out to landowners, see if they can, uh, they can help us out. I'll, I'll, I think for now, they'll be storing some at the airport, minus Danny, and, and then maybe at your, at the sheriff's shooting range. At, at the range, and.
For the, I guess, I'm sorry, Sheriff.
Oh. And, uh, and, uh, at the, at the range, and airport, and right now at, at BP Station as well. Okay. As much as they can.
Sheriff, Sheriff, what about the impound?
The impound, we're, we're trying to clear it out so they can store some of their.
You have that storage also that works?
Yes, a, and that area. And, um, you know, I'm, I'm happy that, um, you know, we were heard, and they're providing that assistance, both state and federal, from the governor and from Congress. Now, housing, will they be staying in local hotels, or how? I, I know they're going to set up camps in different areas. Okay. Uh, with a twenty-four-seven watch, and they will be using some of the hotels here in Zapata, and, uh, the, the joint counties as well. So, this is a deployment for a good while, eight months, you mentioned? Yes, a couple of months. I don't know exactly. If the surge moves, or, or we see that the surge might be happening somewhere else, they'll deploy some of the resources elsewhere. But right now, they're concentrating here. So, it'll, it'll be fluid. I think they'll be moving. Yeah, so, just if, if the citizens are concerned, there's nothing going on at this time, it's just we're, we're preventing and deterring the surge from happening.
Proactive approach.
Yes. Yeah. Appreciate the governor, and you work with the governor, and then bringing some resources down here to, to help, uh, help your department out. That is correct. Uh, with that, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Esser, Carl. Yeah. I'm going to meet with him on Wednesday, so we can, uh, we can take a look at the final, uh, grant submission as a whole. Yeah, they're, they're fast posting on that. Yes. I think it's next week, so, uh, so I think all the departments need to have, have their, their budgets ready to submit. I think for the most part, I think everything is ready to go, so. If they'd be willing to provide it on a big grant, and I'll take it to them as well, or email it to? I, I think, talking with Mr. Esser, I think it'd be better if, if the whole grant, all the departments submitted it together, so. At the same time, that way, um, we're going to provide ours, but if anybody wants to send him theirs at this time, they can't. That way, he can start lodging on and submitting for each, each department, each branch of the county. We'll get some funding for equipment and, and resources, and, and, you know, and of course, overtime and salaries for our departments and other departments that are going to be. Because I, I believe DPS is already arresting and charging criminal aliens with criminal trespass. That is correct. Um, there was a minor, a minor hiccup in one of the surrounding counties, where they might need to, to live elsewhere to deploy the, the processing center. So, they might even consider Zapata, but that would be something that would be discussed with you at a later time. But I know, uh, I know they're looking for processing centers closer to the border, that way they don't lose time transporting. Sure. And prosecuting the subjects. I haven't been approached, but Sheriff, we were, uh. Yes, it was just a, a comment the, the governor made, and I said, well, you're the man to talk to. Well, of course, yes, of course. It's just court decisions, I guess. We, we certainly, uh, we want to help, any, any way we can help the governor and his efforts. And the, the governor appreciates that we're being proactive and are, are, you know, attending to the needs of the state and federal agencies, and that we're, we're receiving them with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your words, Sheriff.
Any other communications, Commissioner?
Well, yesterday, Judge, they had a, the Miss Falcol Lake pageant was held yesterday, and I, and I guess we just want to congratulate all the pageant title holders. I know that it's a, it's a.
It's an annual event, yes.
Yes, it's an annual event.
Beautiful young ladies, yes.
And they'll represent Zapata, and I know two of them will represent Zapata at, uh, the Miss Texas Pageant in Houston, so, just congratulations.
And who was the winner this year? Okay.
Yeah, but there, there were several titles for several, you know, for the Miss, the teen, little pre-teen, amazing, so.
It's a big event, it's a, it's a big event.
And the year goes by really fast for these girls, so just for them to enjoy their ring. I know you were a title holder, right? You, or one of your grandsons.
Leanna.
Leanna, your daughter?
Yes.
Yes, her daughter, yeah, so they have. It goes by really fast.
Very well. Any other communications? And I will move on to public comment. Uh, this section provides the public the opportunity to address the Commissioner's Court on any items on the agenda. Any members of the public wish to address the court at this time? And now, we'll move on to item number six, approval of invoices. Any questions, Commissioner? We have invoices from October the eighth, twenty twenty-one, through October twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, for a total of one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion.
As presented, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Mendoza, to approve as presented, although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion carried. Item number seven, approval of checks issued. We have checks from ten, eight, twenty twenty-one, through ten, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, for a total of one million, two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to approve, seconded by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? Although in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to the action item. We will deliberate and consider action. Item number eight is to hire a medical assistant for Zapata County Regional Jail and Zapata County Women's Jail at a starting pay of thirty-one thousand, eighty dollars. Commissioner Solis, I know the sheriff, uh, department had requested this during the budget process, and, you know, we, we weren't able to approve a permanent physician at that time. I think the need is still there. I, I understand the need is still there. Uh, moving forward, will, will this satisfy, uh, requirements for the, with the, the, the commission, the jail commission? Is, is, are we out of compliance? Right, right now, at this time, yes, because of the twenty-four-seven, uh, watch on our, our inmates, and, uh, due to the fact that we'll be receiving more inmates. Yes, a, as we, as we move forward with Operation Lone Star, yes. Uh, with this, we would be, with the hiring of this, uh, medical assistant, we would be in compliance.
Sheriff, how many medical assistants do you currently have equipped?
Two.
Two, so this will be number three?
Yes. And it will be for both, uh, female and the male facility? Yes.
Commissioner, where is, where is money going to come from? He's not budgeted, I know.
It, it's not budgeted, but I would like the, the court to consider not amending the budget so, so early in, in the, in the year, uh, and try and work within the budget. Uh, I think the, the jail, there might be a detention officer or two that will, um.
They can see you, are you considering?
Just working within, like, I think there's going to be a couple of detention officers that are not going to be working there in a week or two, or if you already have a vacant position, like, use those funds for this position instead of, you know, adding to the deficit.
The jail being fully active?
We, we, we have, we have, we're, we're tasked with a deficit budget, and we're adding, we're moving further away instead of getting closer, so.
And we've had those conversations, and, and of course, I talked to Sheriff, is there any way you can move, uh, detention officer positions as, you know, as it is? The jail is going to be, is almost at capacity. We're going to be adding more inmates as, as Operation Lone Star comes into, into play. The, to funding, Commissioner, I, what I was looking at is, uh, elected officials gave back a certain amount of funds, uh, and I, I think those monies are in the budget, uh, so those monies could be used to innovate, to be available to use for this, uh, budget for the, which is thirty-one thousand, I think, uh, as elected officials on the rescinding of our salaries, we, I think we totaled close to seventy thousand that was budgeted, and we returned, uh, back to the budget that are not going to be used. So, we would have the monies in, in our general order.
But we come to the same thing, Judge. We were thrown under the bus about three weeks ago that we're spending a lot of money, and now we give them back so we can be safe side. Now, we're getting that money because we don't have it.
Well, I, I think the public was upset about the court giving them those raises to, to ourselves. It wasn't about spending the money on things that may be needed.
Well, they told them that we were broke.
Well, well, we just talked about a deficit. Yes, we're in a deficit budget. Now, do we fund this with monies that we, that the court already approved, uh, i- i- for this budget? Or do we allow, uh, the jail to possibly be in non-compliance and then be fined or may possibly be closed? That, that's what we're looking at. Now, yes, it's, it's difficult to say, do we have the monies? The monies are there. We, we approved a deficit budget, but we still have monies to, available to fund this position because of the monies that were returned by the elected official. That's.
And not, not all elected official, Judge, I'm sorry.
No, and returned, no. How many are still outstanding?
Well.
How much are we?
I don't, I don't, I don't have, uh, that in front of me.
How much are we in the, in the hole, Mr. Navarro?
The deficit budget's about, about one point four million dollars.
One point four million?
So, anything that, I was going to bring up the same thing with the, you know, eight and nine are along the same lines, that we're adding to the deficit unless we are able to work within the budget of using another position, uh, that, that'll become vacant. That's just my suggestion. I mean, the, the decision is ultimately the court's.
Well, we would be more in a deficit if the jail did not produce funding.
Exactly.
So, we can shut them down, and we're going to lose a lot of good people.
I know that, we're not supposed to.
Hold on a minute. We can lose a lot of good people, and we can lose a lot of money for the county. I don't know who else is generating one point two million dollars to bring into the county at this time, but I do believe it's the Zapata County Sheriff's Office and the regional and the female county. I do know for a fact, and the numbers relate.
Yes, motion to approve item number eight.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, and the money will come from, basically, the general order that had been approved with the monies that are available from the salaries that were returned.
Well, if I may speak now?
Yeah. I didn't disrespect you.
That's okay, that's okay, Sheriff. I, I was just going to say that I know that we're not supposed to amend the budget, but when it comes to an emergency, we can. So, that's what I was going to say. I was, I'm going to say that I would be against it. So, that I know that I, I read where it says, I can see that it can only, if anything was overseen from the budget, the original budget, we can amend it, but just for emergencies. And I know that this is something that you guys are saying that you need, so I, I'm.
Okay, true. Got a motion, a second, although in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Although opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Item number nine is to approve part-time positions that requested by department heads at the food pantry, the public library, and the water plant, uh, community center. Commissioners, I, you know, of course, these were positions that were being considered also in, in the budget process, and, and we were not able to fund them. The food pantry, I, I received a call from, uh, the department head there last week. Uh, she tells me that, uh, there's three ladies there herself, uh, about, a lady volunteer, and then one, another lady from experienced works, uh, that helped her out. She says some of the items are extremely heavy, and they, they need additional help, uh, maybe three or four times out of the week, uh, because of the, the number of, uh, of bags they're having to, to process, the number of clients that, that they're seeing there at the, at the nutrition center. Last year, there was, we did, uh, approve a part-timer to, to help out, uh, and she's requesting that this gentleman be placed back on on a part-time basis to help them out with, with the heavy, heavier items that they're having, uh, to deal with. It comes back to the same, okay. So, we weren't able to fund it, uh, initially, uh, during the budget process. The need is there. I, this would not be amending the budget because these are part-time positions, but we do need to fund them. Uh, I, I, uh, I asked the treasurer's office to help me with how much a, uh, a, a, a part-time position, thirty hours a week with, with no benefits, uh, for, uh, the length of, of a year, how much that would cost the county, and we're looking at close to fifteen thousand dollars to fund that position to, to help, uh, with the food pantry chores. So, it would be about forty-five? Forty-five for all three. Uh, and the public library, Mr. Navarro's in the audience, and, uh, I know Mr. Navarro has had several conversations with me regarding the same thing that, uh, and we're all shortage on staff, because over the years, you know, attrition, lower budgets, we, we, I mean, most of our departments, uh, went, uh, down on staff, so, uh, either, the option is either do we have the ability to transfer someone to help at the, at the food pantry, at the library, at the water plant to help these departments out, or do we bring in part-time help? Or do we leave them, uh, and say, well, do the best you can with the staff you have? I mean, those are the options. On the community center and the water plant, of course, there's a lot of foot traffic. A lot of the, our community, uh, members go there to pay their water bills. The facilities are used often. Uh, they're, so it, it requires cleaning on a daily basis. At this point, the water plant has not been able to clean, uh, their facilities on their own with their own staff. We, we had, uh, a part-time help last year to, to keep that. I think it's important that, since those facilities are used by the public on a daily basis, and because of the pandemic and other things, we need to keep those areas clean. And we wouldn't have somebody else from the, from another department go help out? It, it doesn't work. I mean, we, we tried sending somebody out from, uh, from, from this department, from the, uh, courthouse over there. Uh, it seems that if they're not there on a daily basis, they can't keep up. So, we used to say, maybe.
Judge, what, and what are you all going to do about my, my office?
There you go, it's, yeah, it's, uh.
We're doing it.
Does, does the water plant have any, uh, any funds available to help with the cost of this? I'm like, I'm.
I, I, I believe they do. I, I talked to Mr. Tridino and says, do you have to hire contractors? He says, yes, I hire contractor to fix ponds, to fix electric. So, he has contract, line item, he'll co, a contractor, but, uh, I'm just, you know, we need to do something. Either he hires, uh, you know, fund to hire a contractor, or I just, I don't want that, uh, that building there or that office to, uh, have, uh, you know, public going in there to dirty, soil the bathrooms, uh, the hallway, so we need to, we need to keep cleaning it.
And if we're not amending the budget, where is it coming from, Judge?
It'd be from the same salary that we refunded to, to the, to the budget from the, those, those monies that we didn't accept. I think in total, with the, with the, uh, elected officials who have refunded their pay increases, uh, we would, it's close to seventy thousand dollars. So, it would be very close to, to funding these three positions for a good length of time, and I'm, I might not be able to fund it for the entire year, but.
Because between this and, and the, and the Jade or, or the M eight person.
We're looking at seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, we, I might not be able to fund them the whole year, but it'd be a good length of time.
How many monies do we have at the library right now?
Three. Three. Sometimes I'm out, or she's out, so it's very difficult.
You're saying we have three?
We have a lot of people.
Do we, do we have three, Ms. Navarro?
We have three, right?
Well, she's counting herself as a supervisor, yeah.
No, but, but in total, how many people?
Including yourself, three.
Three.
And we're getting a lot, we're nervous now, and we have a lot of people. And we need to help. Sometimes I'm out, she's by herself, or both of us are going to be out.
So, when we say part-time, how many hours are we doing?
Thirty hours a week.
Thirty hours a week. Thirty hours a week, yeah.
And, and as for me, I, I mean, I believe that the monies that the elected officials gave back, it goes to good use and, and hiring more people on board. I just wanna make sure that we're not amending the budget and the monies that we're, we returned, it's not really money that we have because we are in the red, right, or no?
Yes, we, we, the budget is legal, Commissioner, because we do have a fund balance. So, we, we're not, when we're saying we're in the red, yet, we're, we're, in this year's budget, we're spending more than what we're taking in. But we have a healthy fund balance to back up the deficit. The problem is, as we move forward, year after year after year, to come, come, doing that, then we won't have a fund balance and then we'll certainly be, we'll be right in that.
That's the only thing that worries me, we're gonna keep adding positions and five years from now, we're gonna have to start cutting all these positions.
I, I know, we've done it in the past and, and it's, it's certainly a very difficult process.
How much do we have, how much currently do we have in the fund balance?
About ten million, I don't know, ten million, you have about.
There's about six million that are free and available.
Yeah.
So, you're talking about. Four years' worth of, of deficit budget.
So, we keep adding positions after four years and we're pretty much gonna have to start cutting, that's what worries me.
Yeah, well, these aren't permanent positions, these are, uh, temporaries and we can fund them for a few months at a time.
Judge, let me ask you one thing, if, if, if number nine will pass, can you include precinct four office?
Yeah, it's up to you, Commissioner, if that janitor can, can spend a few hours at each site, uh, I think, I, I don't see why not.
And I wanna add that they can also clean the swimming pools.
I think that's.
You know, I've been, I've been, we've been doing it for a long time, you know, we don't have extra work.
And, and, and just so, just to be clear, between these positions and the jail position, uh, we're, we're at about ninety thousand, Judge. Because thirty-one for the benefits with retirement and all that.
What are the benefits for these?
No, not for these, but for the medical assistance we are, so we're talking about ninety thousand.
It was fourteen-five, I think, for, for fifty-some weeks, the whole year. It can be less, I mean, with, with the money, raise up the monies that are, that are available and, you know.
Motion to approve item number nine, Mr. Senator.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa to approve, second by Commissioner.
Including precinct four office, Commissioner?
Yeah, well, we, we will direct, uh, the community center director and waterworks to.
No, I'm done, I'm sorry.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will do motion back one.
And motion, sir.
Yeah. Item number ten is, and I, I think we're all out of any salaries that are maybe available to, to spend on, on additional position. Item number ten is to approve all pending commissioners' court minutes through September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Solis, uh, thank you, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary Jane, where the public will have access to all these minutes?
Yes, we're, we have them.
Okay. Item, uh, number eleven, uh, is to approve a, a quote for the removal of aging insulation at the Helping Hands Food Pantry. The, the original, uh, structure at the food pantry and replace with closed cell spray foam. Mr. Solis and I know we use that, that spray foam on, on the new addition and it certainly makes a difference. I, I noticed, uh, the old section and a lot of the insulation is already hanging from the ceilings, it's, uh, it's torn. Uh, and it is becoming a hazard to the employees there as it continues to deteriorate. I think, I, so, Mr. Solis, you had asked me if he could get a quote and, uh, the same gentleman, the same company that, that, uh, did the work there and, uh, I don't know.
Is that the trade T A C?
Yeah, I, um, I know, uh, there's some commissioners that would table eleven, twelve, and thirteen for the next meeting. Um, I know that the quotes that I dropped off at your office, but I might.
I have a quote here for ten thousand five hundred and twelve dollars for the insulation.
So, um.
And how old are the additions, Mr. Solis?
Do you wanna get more?
Since the building is made, they do forty years.
Forty years, yeah.
Do you wanna get more quotes or?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that I wanted to ask, uh, Pastor Miller, that he's got his building insulated, just to, um, make, uh, do a comparison on that. Um, and then, and the work be on there pretty bad.
Judge, don't make the motion that we table, I, I'm thinking with thirteen, but that's requested by the.
Motion, motion to table items eleven, twelve, and thirteen, uh, by Commissioner Mendosa, second by Commissioner Gasa. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number fourteen is to approve a quote for replacement of light fixtures located within the depths of the piece.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve.
I know that the estimate's on the back, Judge.
Yes, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five and thirty-two.
That's including labor and material, the judge, uh, has spoken to me that all current light fixtures are very old and just, you know, setting on and all, so.
Very well, we have motion, and the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Who make the second?
Me.
Solis, Gasa.
Item fifteen is to approve the hiring of Alfonso J. Benamides, uh, cemetery maintenance, ten dash four oh nine, slot two. At ten dollars an hour effective October the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Motion by Commissioner Gasa, second, and by Commissioner Solis. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number sixteen is to approve the sheriff's and constable's fees with no changes.
Second.
Judge, we don't have to take action on this item because the deadline was October first, that's already been submitted.
So, it's already, so we're just ratifying?
Yes.
Okay, so that's fine, uh, we're ratifying that, that they stay the same, you know, with no changes. Motion by Commissioner Solis, second by Commissioner Gasa, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen is to review, consider, and approve change orders for the Colorado Project. Mr. Solis, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
They wouldn't be able to come from the project fund because the project doesn't fund it to be connected. So we'll have to come from county funds.
And you're talking about ten thousand dollars?
Yes. Either that, or we get county crews to go connect it. But either way, I think we should get a connection.
You know, I've been around long enough to have some projects, we connected it, but the funding agency allowed us to connect the homes.
There is some.
And then on others, we didn't, and it was up to the homeowner to connect. I mean, as far as the homeowner, we start charging, or water work will start charging because the service is available regardless immediately. So I just, I don't know if we can set a precedent to where we can pick one project, yes, another project. Because we have denied these connections in the past to another project. So that's who concerned, not exactly the funding, which is minimal, but just the fact that we're doing it for some and not for others. Might create a problem for going forward. So that's kind of what concerned me.
Sure.
Because I, you know, Mr. Mazzara, I thought maybe the funding agency would allow us to use their funds to connect and.
They, no, they won't. There is, there is some funding there. We still have one more project left in Lake Village. So the funding that's still available would be for the Lake Village, I guess, May ninth and services, but not. The actual sort of all of the connections.
For that reason, Commissioner, I think we should just, I mean, I know it's gonna be a cost to the homeowners. I think there's one owner that was connected because he approved a.
They donated an easement to the, to the county for, for the project. And in exchange for, for the easement, instead of getting monetary compensation for that easement, he, where they were.
We get the connection.
Yes, and then that's.
So that, that seems.
Yeah, so that's the only one that, you know, that he, he put in that sort of, that request in lieu of anything.
I, I just, it'd be hard for me to, to talk to a homeowner in the past and say, yeah, you made me connect my own at my cost, and then now you're connected. So I, I just don't want to go there on my part.
That's fine. I, I, I understand that.
Yeah.
I, I, the reason I brought it up is because I've also seen that some of the owners, they never connect. And then they come with like, well, the county's been charging me for two, three years, and I'm not even connected, and then we're having to go back and find out.
I guess, I guess maybe is there any way we can serve notice to these homeowners and let them know that the services are available? That anytime they can hire a private plumber to be able to connect more than.
I, I will, I will visit with the homeowners.
Okay, there's not a lot, I mean.
Now, it's only three homes and six businesses.
Yeah.
And I know they've been waiting for this service for quite a while as well, so.
I can do a little.
I'm Agent, you're briefing Commissioner, I don't know how you feel about that.
Commissioner, if you want to put the bill, ten thousand, or?
Well, we read that situation with the judge, it's like, you know, another's gonna come up, and we're, we're gonna be in the bind, you know, so.
So, I guess.
Okay, so, change order, this was the only change order on the item?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Oh, I need to deny the.
I, I, I'm sure with those emotions denied, change order on the Colorado water section by Commissioner Solis, or all those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Item number eighteen is to review, consider and approve water line installation on the Sache Road to be installed by property owner. Item number eighteen.
Page two, so, page two provided in the map, and then also provided a separate, I guess, separate machine. The separate machine that are provided individually, that one is county roadmap.
Okay.
Okay, so, if you look at the county roadmap, you're looking at FM twenty-six eighty-seven. And we have, we sat your road, we sat your ranch road, and it goes up to Trasher Main Road. The gentleman is looking to put in, if you look at the map that I provided, which is this one here. He's looking, I put in a, a mark trap where it says existing meter, there is a current meter there. And so he's looking to put in a water line where the red line that's highlighted is, is that. And so there, it's just gonna be on a portion of the county road, the rest of it is gonna be on private property. So I told him I had to come and bring it forward, and.
But we do, this is not water work, right?
No, it's not something about the county water work, this is Bakuluru Water. Bakuluru Water has to approve, but it is county right of way. So we're, if we ban, we would ban provision to being county right of way, I don't know, they just have to be thirty-six inches deep. And, you know, I guess they, they have to cause.
They, they, they require.
And I know once that water line is, is installed, other ranchers are gonna want to tap into it, I'm pretty sure.
It is, well, the thing, the thing is, where the meter is.
Okay.
That, from that point down.
Okay, it, it'll be as large as a meter in one certain, okay. I just, you know, I want to be clear that we don't allow other ones to, other property owners to, they have to do the same thing.
No, yeah, so, so he, he is where the meter is at, that's where the meter, yeah, the rest of it is gonna be a private line. So I explained to him, if there's a leak, you know, he's gonna have to deal with.
But we have enough room there on the right of way?
It, it is.
It's a narrow right of way, isn't it?
It's a narrow road. It would be on the edge of, of the right of way.
Okay.
Which, yeah, there's, there's no.
And the owner's incurring full cost for.
The owner's incurring the cost for, for the installation on this.
Motion to approve.
Good motion by Commissioner Mendoza to approve, second by Commissioner Solis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
I only give provision on the portion that is coming right away.
Right.
There's a section that is not. After makes a turn, he's going into private property, so he needs to get an easement from the private owners.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number nineteen is to review, consider and approve water line installation on US Highway three north of San Ignacio Yeco subdivision.
Okay, this is, this is the map that I have, third map.
The whole of it.
The whole of it, yes. So on that one, this, on that map, on the bottom, on the bottom right side, you can see that is the San Ignacio Yeco subdivision. On the upper left-hand side, you see the subdivision of Las Candelas. So just to give you a reference of where we're at.
Yeah.
There is an existing line going from the San Ignacio Yeco subdivision that's already been extended, the county extended it a couple of years back. About eight hundred to a thousand feet, and it gets up to where the red highlighted marking is.
Okay.
So it already gets up to that point. We weren't gonna continue, but we're not able to because there's a covert right there. And it's very, it's a very steep right of way. Uh, the intention would be then to get easements from all the private owners. And, and then, once we get the easements, be able to continue moving forward. I'd like to eventually be able to connect our, our line, there'll be a time line to the Las Candelas subdivision, so that we have a loop there. Between the San Ignacio Yeco subdivision and Las Candelas subdivision.
Yeah, that would make sense for the water to continue.
For the circulation work. We did have some issues with TCQ visiting on.
And having to flush our valves out quite often.
So this will be limiting.
I mean, that makes sense. We, we just can't go any further along eighty-three, so.
No.
Because of the, of the slope and the concrete structures that are there.
Yes, so we would have to get easements, fifteen-foot easements from all the owners, so there'll be contingent on us being able to acquire easements from all the owners down the line.
And so, I mean, how far into that subdivision, Las Candelas is the, the, our existing line?
Right, okay, our, our existing line goes into.
Oh, I see it, that last lot, yes.
Yes, right now, I'm putting up to that last lot. I'd have to get from that last owner, I think it's Orlando, Orlando Villaga.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we'll have to get an easement from him as well, so that we can do the interconnection between that line and our existing line. It's roughly about four hundred feet.
Okay.
Uh.
I mean, the, the project would make sense for, for the reasons you, you mentioned to the court. Are you gonna be working on private easements, or do you want the county to?
Well.
I mean, who's gonna be working, I mean.
I, I've been, I, I don't, I mean, you'd have, you're gonna have to get, they're gonna have to get, um.
I mean, you're expressing interest, Otto, do you want us to hire you to, to, to?
Well.
Or can you do this?
No. I don't have to do this, so, yeah.
Well, that, I mean, that's something we'd have to pursue, Commissioner.
Yes, I mean, I've been working with Mr. Mazzara, and I've told him if he needs any help talking to the owners, I, I can talk to them and see what we can do. Mr. Mazzara just didn't let me know what I can do on my end.
I think, I mean, I was speaking with the owner, it'd have to be a no-cost easement for us, for us to, it'd be a direct benefit to these property owners, so.
Yes.
In the end, it would, it would benefit our, our whole water system, but, yeah, I, I think we'd have to move along those lines, Commissioner. If they want to donate their easements to, to the county, and then we could possibly move forward with this project.
Okay, so.
I just need a list.
Yes, I can, I can get you a list of the owners, and then, uh, then, that's, okay, so if it's a no-cost to the county, I'd.
And then, and then the court would decide how much the cost would be to install the water line.
Okay.
But it'd make sense for us, for the obvious reason that, you know, we could loop our water system.
Yes, okay. I can, I can bring you the, I mean, I have the, the owner's names already here, but I, because I have, it's Sweet Home Properties, which is Mr. Ramirez. It's Diaz, Javi Diaz, Tomas Garcia, Fernando Gomez, and, uh, uh, Shila. Yeah, and then Sweet Home Properties. So those are, those are the property owners, and then Mr. Orlando Villaga, because we need to go to the years as well.
Yeah, Orlando, Mr. Ramirez, and then, yeah, they're not gonna enter there.
Okay, yeah, we're here.
Yeah.
Good.
Good.
And we will be getting also the permit. We need, we need a permit.
Well.
Well, why don't we, why don't we agree to, to, uh?
I guess to authorize the.
Commissioner to, to, to approve the property.
Yes.
Before we move on to total cost.
Yeah, I, I will bring you, I'll bring you a cost estimate for your review and consideration at that point of the, the laser line and what, you know.
What cost.
Other projects.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So, motion by Commissioner Mendoza to allow Commissioner Elizondo to make contact with the property owners and try to acquire easements for the county. For the installation of this water line. Seconded by Commissioner Garsa, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty is to review, consider and approve cemetery layout on new section.
What? Does, Commissioner, there's two layouts there for, for review. Layout number one, which is, the, the first option.
No, I haven't, I haven't, no, I haven't even seen it, I haven't seen it.
No, the, 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 I met once with, once we talked to Mr. Salinas, and that's formally been approved by Mr. Salinas. I, I presented it to him in the past in terms of more or less what we can do, and so we brought some of those ideas. So that we can start looking at how we're moving forward, and I can get some direction in terms of, uh, the, the cost that is gonna be involved. Because the two different layouts, there's different costs that are involved. And on the first layout, what we did is we minimized, uh, the number of, you know, cost due to things that we have in there. So, and, and just either if, how many plots are being added with, with that particular layout. We did also add a boulevard, and the intention of, of, the committee was that we could have that boulevard be paved. Not the side streets, but the boulevard itself have it paved, much like we have the original, and then have an entrance there. We also looked at putting in a, um, a fifty-by-twenty building structure, uh, or some kind of building structure. Doesn't have to be a fifty-by-twenty, but at this, at this, uh, particular option, we're looking at a fifty-by-twenty.
You're, you're talking about the proposed parking recovery area?
Yes. Yeah, that's a, that's a fifty-foot by twenty-foot, uh, area where they can have mass services there for, or, you know, in the cemetery. Sometimes they're in between the areas where all the other plots are, and it's just, makes it difficult for people to get closer. And so then that would be, give you an area where they can gather. Uh, it could be a different configuration on that, on that structure, it could be circular. I got a layout from Mr. Salinas, that it was a, a nice circular, um, uh, building, or, or, I guess, moosie.
Like an open pavilion?
Yeah, an open pavilion, but it wasn't in a circular shape. Uh, it was from another cemetery, and, and they're really nice. They have a, the, also like, uh, a stone area where they can then lay the casket there, and, and then.
Yeah, like option one, option one is pretty good.
Yeah, they are, I mean, that's a good, what, what's the difference in the number of plots between the two?
Well, the difference is really the price.
The price of the, uh.
The price of the.
Of the boulevard and.
Whether or not, did it, the, 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 like, the boulevard is even painted, right?
Right.
So then the paving is, it does, it does have some cost, and then you add the building structure. And, I mean, it doesn't have to all be added at one time, it could be added in sections, but this could be like a master plan of what you want it to be. Uh, also the fencing, the fencing, everything has to be fenced, I mean, but.
Yeah, we're probably, the majority of you haven't changed any fence, I would think.
We're, we're looking at a six-foot chain link fence on this new section, which is roughly about, starting from the top corner here, going around and coming back around. Heading backwards to the original, uh, that's roughly about three thousand feet. So we put a six-foot fence, three thousand feet.
That's, 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 item number eighteen. That's, that's number eighteen, that's the fence right there.
Oh. Oh, item eighteen, oh, okay, great, remember.
Yes, that, the fence, three thousand feet.
I'm sorry.
Number eighteen?
Oh, the price, the other price. Okay, that's, oh, no, that's, that's for the Colorado.
No, no, that's for the Colorado.
Yeah, that, that's for the Colorado water.
No, 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 this is Colorado.
Ah, you're giving me something.
Ah, you're giving me something.
Yeah, like, ah, it's just a.
I got the operating, like, you wanna make a.
Yeah.
You'd test the.
I, no, I thought I had a test. At this.
Be a test to run, right? It has more plots, uh.
I didn't attach.
It's a size, yeah.
They don't, they don't have a price.
There's a nice boulevard that.
But it's, uh.
In area.
I did, uh, I did get some estimates, but it's just the, the pricing on six-foot chain link fence, I didn't get any formal estimates, just a budget estimate.
Well, it's not cheap, I know.
It's, okay, yes.
We all want to.
Okay, so if everybody has friends before, and you have an idea that it's not, it's not cheap, and then the asphalt, you're looking at about, ballpark about eight dollars, that our crews could do, but it's about eight dollars a square yard, and then, uh, I mean, that's on a ganache base, and then the asphalt's about four dollars per, a square yard, that's what. So that gives you roughly, uh, uh, you know, twenty, about twenty-five thousand, uh, uh, ganache, put, you can put in there on the different areas, and then, uh, also you have about another thirty-seven thousand.
Yeah, for, for sure, in the end, to, to make it really nice, and by kind of get the water infrastructure and everything, we're probably looking at a hundred thousand dollars to, to.
And you're, you're looking.
Mr. Mendoza, but you, Mr. Mendoza, but you're not including the, the paving machine, right? Because the one we have doesn't work, we have to.
No, no, they, they don't give me a price that they, they.
But we'll get those estimates before we get there, so.
And it's basically, as you mentioned, a master plan, just we have a plan to follow.
It's a layout.
We have a better balance in the cemetery fund, I think we have what Mr. Mendoza.
We have a little over a hundred thousand dollars. I'll make a motion to approve option one.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Solis to approve option one. Second by Commissioner Mendoza, I think we're saying that, that's kind of what you envisioned.
Yeah, we, uh.
Yeah.
I think it was rather than I said, the, I'm just, I mean, sort of, I mean, he just put it on the ground for.
Yeah.
And we, that's what we wanted.
I think it's a really nice layout, I think people.
I should have the, we're gonna be happy with that. Uh, I'll have to do it all at once, I mean.
Right, but I think the fencing, well, we're in a hurry to get, uh, plots, uh, uh.
That's why I brought it to Commissioner's Court, because I, I think we're, we're, um, we're running out of things on the old section, and, you know, unfortunately, we're, you know, have to be moving into, you know, this section, uh, sooner than we'd like to, but.
Because I'm, I don't know who works on the water lines, but I would want to see that the water lines, the faucets are not too close to the streets, because, I don't know, are, you know, all of us get called, and that's easy, that's because they're close. Is it called that they're always running into the water lines, they're just.
There's something we talked about, you can tell us.
Yeah, yeah, she had mentioned that, 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 you know, water lines, the faucets, keep it hid by, you know, people visiting the, uh, site, and that sometimes, that, well, that's gonna happen, uh, what we can try to see is if we can maybe move it, uh, a little bit further in, so that it's not so close on the edge, and, and people then maybe stay on those, on those roads that, that we have. We did, like I mentioned, we did minimize the amount of roads we have in there. There's still little spaces in between the plots, that is for, you know, the, the cemetery crew services to, to.
Now, see that, yeah.
And, and things like that.
And, and it's, it's the same amount of, of area that's currently have the old cemetery, as far as width on the alleys, I guess the alley.
It is, it is, the alleys are intact, you know, same space. So we kept the same configuration in terms of orientation of the plots, and then same spacing in between from one plot to the next, and, uh, it's just, the only thing is we minimized the number of roads going through there, and then we added that boulevard so that we can have some of it, that, that area has a little parking layout. It, it provides a few parking spaces, not a whole bunch, but some, and, uh, sometimes people, I guess, can go there and pray or, you know, visit.
Yes.
Uh, and they're in a shaded area. I think it's, it's a very nice layout that Mr. Salinas, I mean, I mean, he came up with, but, uh, it, um, will be done in places.
You know, uh, the idea was to use a boulevard to convince us to park, you know, we would drive in and, and just follow the, uh, directions of the funeral home director, and, um, the people would drive and park, double parking on the boulevard, on both sides of the, of the, of this new boulevard. So the parking lot that Mr. Mendoza is providing right there, under, uh, next to the canopy, would be for the immediate family.
Yes.
So the first, the, uh, park right here, lower the casket, immediate family parking, and, um, most people that would go to their respects will be double parking on both sides of the boulevard, so that'll be the parking. So, you know, when the services are over, you get in your car and you drive out. The, um, the idea was to, um, not take too much space from the cemetery, you know, uh, space, where we utilize that as plots.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about, I guess, close to four thousand plots, that would be, uh, in addition to what we have, so yes, I think it'd be, uh, in service for, for many, many years, uh, serving up here, so.
The other idea that we were coming up, my staff at the office would get a lot of complaints of water, uh, damaging of the water lines, uh, the recommendation that I was gonna bring to the court was to give a water for its department, and, um, whoever wants water to sell, um, meters. That way people will be responsible, because they go turn on the water, they let it run the whole weekend.
I know.
Since it's not costing them, it's a big problem.
That is true.
I can't get anybody to go shut off the main valve, and then turn it on maybe just on weekends for watering. So that's a big concern to me and to the taxpayers that we're providing free water, irresponsible people that just go turn on their sprinklers or the water faucet and just let the water run twenty-four hours, the whole weekend or the whole week.
I, I, I don't know if that's, you know, doable to install meters, uh, I, I think it'd be, uh, very difficult to, to control.
Well, it's, that, it's not.
I mean, but I, I know that the cost is, is outrageous, and, uh, it is a service that the county wants to continue to provide to our community. I mean, it might be something that, you know, we, we just, it's, uh.
But as up to the board, that's what they're gonna be more expensive.
Water lines for county use, not necessarily for.
Right.
For private, uh, use.
There's, there's, there's some, there are some plots that have, uh, sprinkler systems.
Right.
If a sprinkler handle out, then it turned on, it's just.
But you're talking about four thousand plots, that'll be four thousand meters of that, yeah.
Well, the, but, but they'll be coming in as they request them.
Right, I understand, but I'm saying, you know, it's, it's, uh, a big.
Yeah, it'll be a lot of, a lot of, yeah, a lot of, basically you're adding a lot of accounts.
Yeah.
And then how would you then feel that, if they wanna have, let's say, a meter, okay, what range, and you have to have a range.
And then each one would have at least one faucet, and.
Right now, we don't have individual faucets, it's, it's, just, just a few of them have, have, you know, a sprinkler system, that they have a family section, and it was like, make ten plots, and they'll put in a sprinkler system on that one, or, and then they'll have it running and, and.
But the water is, is, it's, it's substantial, the water is.
Well, and the break of the lines quite a bit.
Yeah, the breaking of the line, so.
But it's, um.
The other problem with that is that they're planting trees in somebody else's plot.
Yes.
So they're taking over, so I tell people to go and, and to get out, that's your property, but they, they tell me that I'm not gonna go for the expense. So I can't be policing somebody, you own the spot, your neighbor comes and they plant an oak tree here. So they want me to pay to go remove it.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, we also then.
It's a, it's a day.
And, and, and I, I, I mean, I've talked about it every day, and I saw another, another structure going up, and I know that, uh, Commissioner's Court already had the, uh, order not to have any more.
I, I'm sure we need to keep an eye on that.
There's, the boulevard, the boulevard there already has no roof, but there.
The employee there, we're supposed to have to employ their, uh.
They, they need to alert us and, and let them know that once they see a structure going up, they need to stop.
I'll check it out after, okay. Yeah, there, there's, there's some, there's some old, no roof, but.
Yeah, we just have to stop, uh, on the way.
Okay, tell them all you're buying is the, the square to lower your casket, not to plant the trees anywhere, because the, the next person next to your quad, that's where the other casket goes, so they're taking up foot. Uh, the very last one is gonna end up on the street.
I mean, I, it's, it's, yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's a headache, uh, we do that, getting the layout also all the time, so.
Yeah.
Sure.
You got a motion and a second, right?
Yeah.
Anything?
So, Lisa Mendosa.
So, so Lisa Mendosa, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
With, uh, option number one, uh, Mr. Mendosa.
Okay, good. Great job.
Yeah.
I have seen all the cemeteries, they can put first, uh, sprinkler systems, and they shut them off one time, everything, that's it.
If the county installed, uh, yeah.
It's better to put a meter, just put sprinkler system.
Right now, we do have, on our, on the one, on the one meter, we do have, we have an automatic cutoff, so, uh, it, it does have a timer on, and it does cut off.
Yeah, I have seen those people that just leave the water running.
Yeah, you're, you're looking at all days, so I think our.
I may not see it, but I have seen another, like, on the new, new cemetery, you're gonna do, just put sprinkler system right on there where the California is.
Yeah.
And you can water all the, all the tubes and everything.
Maybe something we can, yeah.
Well, we can use a bayon, the bayon is for the cemetery, they use this little tractor, go.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, they, they gotta have access to it.
They have to have access, and it's the little tractor where they're gonna get any, the, get, uh, clean the dirt.
So, so how far along are you with providing that, the, the final design to the county as far as the plots, that, uh?
I need to, this is Mr. Salinas, he's thinking, we also have a, um, we have a fifty-foot easement.
The raw water line there, and the sewer line.
Both, and, and we have a raw water line, a sewer line, we have three raw water lines and a sewer line, and a water, and a regular water line. So, but it's, it's within fifty feet, so we keep them all separated, so we do need that fifty, that's where that northern road is.
Yes.
And, uh, so we kept, that's where there's, there's a little gap there, because that, that, uh, we can maybe put some, some, um, you know, landscaping in that area or something.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
In the front, but, and then we, we also have a lift station that we'd like to put in some cedar fencing around it, maybe a eight-foot cedar fencing, we are required to have eight-foot fencing on those, and we currently have it, but it's just chain link.
That would be good.
A cedar, and, and that would be pretty good.
I did talk to, uh, Mr. Mendosa, as far as along the fence line, there's some old growth mesquite trees that we could trim and, and kind of leave them there, and maybe we could build a fence around them, and we won't have to plant new trees that, uh, as, as part of the landscaping, they're already there.
Just let them kind of grow and then just trim them up?
Yeah, and, and, I think they're, they're really nice.
On the existing native, the Romanians.
Yeah, the existing, that, the existing fence line, and we just trim them and, and, uh, I mean, all along the fence line, there's mesquite tree.
Okay, that would be good.
Yeah.
All right.
Instead of bulldozering them and, and having to plant new trees, yeah, so.
We'll move forward with the getting, uh.
Uh, option one.
Yeah, option one finalized, and then, uh, give Mr. Salinas so that we can then go start marking those areas and then have it.
Yeah, okay, very well, thank you, too. So, the next item is, uh, item number twenty-one, is to review, consider, and approve purchase of new pump for the wastewater plant. Uh, funds to come from USDA.
Okay.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, uh.
Are, are we willing to buy down this?
Yeah, yes.
Are they recovered?
We have, um, there were remaining bounds of ten thousand two hundred and forty-nine.
And the, um, the new pumps will be covered with that?
Will be covered with that.
Very, very good, so you got a motion, second, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Second, Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza, appreciate it.
Item number twenty-two is to request qualifications for grant writer slash grant administrator uh, for the Emergency Operations Center Grant to the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner, uh, Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three is to request qualific- qualifications for engineering services for Emergency Operations Center Grant to the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA.
Motion Solis.
Motion by Commissioner Mendoza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, I think this will be a very good project for our community commissioners. Item number twenty-four is to consider applying for the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, uh, TVA-CA and CDVG fund for the community resiliency program. Uh, Commissioner, this program is a grant opportunity for the county, uh, it's, uh, a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars, uh, and it can be used for construction, remodeling, uh, even purchasing of equipment, uh, for emergency services centers, uh, EOC centers, nutrition centers, uh, so, uh, we can, uh, upgrade our nutrition center, we could upgrade our, our, our fire station, we could even purchase, try to purchase a new ambulance with this grant, uh, so, uh, there, there's a lot of, uh, options.
Opportunities.
Okay.
I'll second Commissioner Garza's motion.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Mendosa, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twenty-five is to request qualifications for grant writer slash grant administrator for TBAC-A slash CDVG community resiliency program.
Motion approved.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Garza, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twenty-six is to request qualifications, uh, for engineering services for the TBAC-A dot CDVG community resiliency program.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, seconded by Commissioner Garza, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item number twenty-seven is to acquire the services of CM Company Options to conduct surplus equipment options for Zapata County. Uh, morning, sir.
Good morning, Harry.
Thank you for waiting, yes.
Thank you for allowing us to approach, we were a little tardy this morning, but.
Yes.
It's a Monday. So, what we wanna talk to you about, I'm Greg Sittum, that is Stevens is my South Texas representative.
Okay.
We wanna talk to you about liquidating your surplus and cease equipment. We can take care of those assets for you and free up your county label where they can continue to do your job, do their job. I know everybody's short with, with employees, we're the marketer for that equipment. We have an extensive database of customers that's already in our, in our system, and people ready to buy equipment. We catalog everything, we come out and do the whole thing for you, catalog it, put it on our site, sell it, we arrange all the logistics, work with those, we'll work between you as, as a buyer and a seller, but we don't wanna take your time, we wanna do the whole thing for you. We've had thousands of complete, completed auctions, I've been in business since two thousand, and I think we could bring a big asset to you.
So, as far as the value, uh, will you give us an idea on a starting point for a specific piece of equipment, or?
I, I will, surplus equipment, I'm gonna tell you, right now, the market is hot, so our thing is, is we can put a starting point on it, but it's the same thing as being on the floor of the exchange, it's gonna bring what that market is. If you sell unreserved auctions, people know it's gonna sell, it's gonna always bring marketer above. And so, our goal is, and I, and what we do, is we bring those people to the table and make it bring all the market will stand. Somewhat like the exchange, if you go to ExxonMobil and you own it at a hundred and fifty dollars a share, and it's worth eighty, that's what it's gonna bring that day. It is an auction, and so our goal is, is to get it moved, get it out, out of your, uh, yard.
We don't have reserves on our equipment when we sell.
Well, that was my concern, just 'cause I know that sometimes when we have our, our options, we sell some of this bigger equipment, and it goes pretty cheap, and I know it's worth a lot more than that.
But I think that's the thing that we bring to you, we have an extensive database of customers. Instead of just being local, you're international with us, and so that's why we'll work hard, make that bring all of, all the market will stand.
Your commissions?
Ten percent, ten percent commission, and we pay for everything, all our advertising, our trips coming back and forth, all the cataloging, the logistics of all that, is all on us.
How small of an item, or how large, or?
We're gonna take care of it.
Everything.
And also, we're gonna, we're only gonna make you sign a contract for that auction.
Okay.
We're not like some of these other companies that come in and say, you gotta sign with us for five years, you don't have to sign with us for five years. If you're not satisfied, we wanna do everything we can do, we're gonna work hard to make you satisfied.
Well, we're gonna have some, some.
We, we have the old type of equipment that, uh, and it's hard for us to put an auction together, we, we usually rely on the chef's department to, to help us, and we, and the departments kind of join in on that auction, so, I think that, that we've always had a need, uh, for some help, and, and, and some of this surplus equipment that, that we need to get rid of, so, I, I mean, I think it's a good idea, I think it's worth, it's worth to try and see.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll send a motion to acquire CM Company Options.
Is also including like computers, uh?
Everything.
Writers, everything.
We're gonna sell it for you.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Solis, uh, to acquire services of CM Company Options, second.
Garza Solis.
Uh, God, Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Solis, any other discussion, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
How soon can we get started?
Right now.
I have a lot, I'm gonna, we have a lot of computers.
We're ready to.
Well, we'll start, uh, I guess, you need to, I guess, get with the department head, we'll, we'll make them in contact with you and.
Right.
And start working on that, I guess we can help you with that and get you the contact information.
Especially with the bridge, so we can certainly have that heavy equipment.
Yes.
All right, we're ready to work for you.
We appreciate your interest.
Keep your employees in the field, it's still dealing with that.
Yes, thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
Does that mean, the, the last thing is that we have the option that I kind of, I, we put some equipment, and it's still there in your, was it sold? Where? I'm just gonna ask where you are. Now we have one of the water faucets there. No, we needed everything to be here on site. Okay, so if, if it's still in the county yard, it still belongs to the county? Yes.
Yeah, but I guess I'll go.
It'll go this time.
They can go register it, and.
Okay.
And, and. We've got consent item, which is the purity line.
Okay, approve.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, it's four eleven of Campo San Yasmundo, Texas, seconded by Commissioner Solis, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, resolutions and proclamations, we have a resolution for the twenty-twenty-two indigent defense grant program.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Mendosa, seconded by Commissioner Garza, although the fair say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number thirty is a resolution of Zapata County to adopt Plan, it's not, I think it's Plan C.
Plan C, just.
Plan C, as the new single member precinct group, but used by Zapata County, uh, motion by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Garza, and I guess the new map commissioner would be, uh, there'd be some small changes to the precinct lines. I think precinct one now would extend to Mesa Salinas?
After Mesa Salinas, I'll be. Pass Mesa Salinas, so it basically would be the cost, and from Mesa Salinas south.
Okay, and then precinct four and two, what?
It's gonna be from, uh, eight, nineteen and twenty, all the way to Roma.
Nineteenth and twenty, all the way to Roma, will now be precinct two. Okay. Okay, so, though for the changes to, to satisfy our, our, our latest census and redistricting and, and to be within any, uh, legal deviations.
It starts when? Right, it starts.
January.
January.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Garza to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Solis, we're now adjourned. I think we've got the resolution to sign.
I will see what you want.
Who, can you use it anymore?
No, me.